For the pleasure of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the room.
Mr. Clanton.
Present.
Mrs. Doyle.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Page.
Here.
Mr. Smigle.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Dr. Alexander.
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Councilman Doyle, do you have thumbs up and thumbs down instead of speaking?
We're televised.
Where's our electronic podium?
Electronic podium, yeah.
We need it.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Well, good evening and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chamber. Tonight, we will begin with public comments on the regular and the consent agenda items, followed by the public hearings. Then the consent agenda, which will be voted on in a block, following the consent agenda, will take up regular agenda items and then new business. To address the council, you should have registered to speak with the clerk prior to 3:00 P.M. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and home address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Before we begin, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the rules governing tonight's meeting?
Certainly, sir. City Council rules permit each speaker three minutes in total to speak on any and/or all consent or and/or agenda docket items at each monthly meeting. If in advance of tonight's meeting you registered with the clerk to comment on a public hearing matter, you will have three minutes to speak on that matter as well. As you approach the council, you'll notice a timer on the lectern. At the beginning of your three minutes, you'll see a green light, which will activate. Two and a half minutes into your remarks, you'll notice a yellow light indicating you have 30 minutes to finish your comments. At the end of three minutes, you'll see a red light and hear a beep. We ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on docket matters, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and not be made in a profane, disruptive, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience. Comments on an agenda item should remain to that item. A speaker who fails to comply with the basic rules of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. And as a reminder, no sign placard, poster, or light material which may be carried by hand shall be permitted in the city council chamber or adjoining areas.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we will begin with comments on the regular and the consent item. And we have registered to speak on R. 7 is Ms. Liz Albert.
Mayor Alexander and City Council, my name is Liz Albert. I live at 5905 Appleton Drive, and I'm a member of the River Forest Shores Wayside Madden Eastern Place Civic League and a member of the Equity for the Eastside Coalition. R. 7 concerns the contract for the final design and construction of a combined recreation library facility. Known as the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center, this project was fully funded for just under $70 million two years ago in the FY 2024 budget. This will include a library branch, a natatorium complex with a 25-yard, eight-lane lap pool, with two 1-meter diving platforms, a therapy pool, a lazy river, an indoor splash pad with water slides, and spectator seating. Also included is a fitness center, basketball court, cardio room, elevated indoor running track, and weight room. Outdoor amenities are multi-sports, open field, tennis courts, pickleball courts, two playgrounds, walking trails, and nature exploratorium, outdoor seating and gathering areas. This will be a great addition to the West Side. As mentioned in the mayor's State of the City address, the East Side will be getting sometime in the near future a nearly identical rec media center to be constructed on the Military Circle Mall site. The East Side looks forward to equitable consideration from the city, something that has been sadly lacking in CIP budgets in the past. An analysis of the current proposed CIP budget illustrates the inequality in capital spending between different areas of the city. What you have is 45% of the named projects go to the downtown and West Side, with only 7% of the named projects go to the rest of the city. Downtown and West Side projects receive six times the amount and will be spent in other areas combined. This is not equitable treatment. We demand the East Side of the city be treated with the same consideration given to the West Side in all matters. Words and pictures are nice, but reality is that nothing is guaranteed until it is in the budget and approved by city council. As a show of good faith, just like you did for the West Side, we request that at least $70 million be added and approved to the fiscal year 2026 budget for the East Side Rec Center. Thank you for your time.
It's the only speaker on R. items. There are no speakers for C. items, however, Mr. Bull. C. 1 will be pulled from the block, okay, and considered separately. Mr. Bull? So we can vote on R. 1?
Go ahead, vote on the C. items.
C. items first, okay.
We'll go back to the public hearing, 1. Is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Approve the consent agenda and dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, with the exception of C. 1. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Mr. Dispend. Let's finish C. 1 and pull C. 4 from the consent, and we'll do C. 1 and C. 2. C. 1 and C. 4. And we continue with the block.
Sure.
Mr. Clanton.
Mr. Clanton.
Okay, I just want to make sure them verifying, so C. 1 and C. 4.
We're going to vote on them separately.
Okay, great. Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
C. 1 is an ordinance granting conditional use permits to authorize the operation of a banquet hall with law of entertainment and the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption named for creatives on property located at 255 Granby Street, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
And C. 4, sir, is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit, vacation rental, on property located at 1920 Norview Avenue, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Can I ask a question? What's the challenge behind this? What's the concern?
Courtney, it had Norview Avenue in terms of Mr. Clanton and I were, Mr. Clanton, it is in Ward 4, so the mistake is on me. It's in Mr. Councilman Page's Ward, so the mistake is mine. So you can move forward with it. Thank you, sir.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Dispend, Mr. Bull.
Dispend, sir.
So, Mr. Clanton.
If we can restart with the vote, so.
Yes.
Mrs. Doyle, I have you as a yes. Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Carried.
Mr. Bull.
Public hearing, 1, sir.
H. 1?
Public hearing, 1, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments approving the terms and conditions of a lease with the Norfolk Senior Center, trading as Prime Plus, for certain premises located in the Titus Town Recreation Center at 7545 Diven Street and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement.
All right, Mr. Bob Batchor.
I want to thank you for letting me speak. I've got to tell you, the chairs are much more comfortable than that windowsill that I sat on for years. I want to take this opportunity to thank you very, for a very long history of supporting seniors through Prime Plus. About 50 years that we've had a relationship with the city of Norfolk. Over the years, we've built a safe, respectful, inclusive community for seniors to excel their plus years with your support. We are excited about our new beginning at Titus Town Community Center. We are committed to expanding our programming through our collaborative partnership with Parks and Rec, Titus Town Neighborhood, and the community, and that will lead to a celebration of art, fitness, culture, and community of all ages in the building. We want to express our appreciation to Martin Thomas, hats off to being a visionary leader who, over three years ago, approached us about, would you be interested in? And as everybody knows, a whole lot has changed in the last three years, but the commitment from the city of Norfolk has not, and our commitment to serve seniors has not, so we're looking forward to it. The entire community is facing a new and increasing financial challenge with the redirection of federal funds. Nice way to put it. I applaud the city of Norfolk for your vision and leadership to maintain a balance of service, renewed finances, that we face in the same challenges as a nonprofit. We are a community-based, independent nonprofit that gets our program ideas from the community and our support from the community. We are excited to work with the local community. In closing, we look forward to expanding our role over the years. This is not a short term, and I know that Courtney quite often asks that question early on this journey, what's the succession plan? The succession plan is that we have a mutually relationship, collaborative relationship with the city, meaning the citizens of the city and serving the citizens, and that that collaborative partnership is to create a safe, respectful, inclusive community for the older Norfolk residents. And I would love also to go on record that we are very interested in working with your announcement on Friday and being in the ground floor possibly of looking at the Military Circle area for making that a celebration of seniors, and we'd be willing to work in partnership with you all, so thank you. That's far less than three minutes. Appreciate it.
I have an ordinance approving the terms and conditions of a lease with the Norfolk Senior Center, trading as Prime Plus, for certain premises located in the Titus Town Recreation Center at 7545 Diven Street and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Just like the state that I spoke with, the Civic League and members that were there and have, since my short time getting here on this, have heard a lot about this particular project, but I commend Bob, Councilman Tom, Vice Mayor Thomas, and the community really working together on a collaborative effort for this, and so I look forward to working with you, as you all can see this through, so with that, I say aye.
Mrs. Doyle, thank you. It's an aye. Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander. Public hearing, 2, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments to amend and re-ordain Section 14.1-59 Calvary Revival Church Precinct so as to change the name of the precinct to East Side Precinct, to amend subsection 14.1-7527 so as to change the name of the precinct from Calvary Revival Church Precinct to East Side Precinct, to amend section 14-125 so as to change the name of East Side Precinct and change the location of the voting place. I have an ordinance to amend and re-ordain Section 14.1-59 Calvary Revival Church Precinct so as to change the name of the precinct to East Side Precinct, to amend subsection 14.1-7527 so as to change the name of the precinct from Calvary Revival Church Precinct to East Side Precinct, to amend section 14-125 so as to change its name to East Side Precinct and change the location of the voting place. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Public hearing, 3, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the sale and conveyance to Roland Investments LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 1311 Reservoir Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants.
Monet Johnson?
Hi, Monet Johnson. Y'all might not have an answer for me today, but I did want to raise a concern about the investment and development of this area, considering that in terms of Norfolk, I'm from this area. I don't live on Reservoir anymore, but my grandmother still does, and I lived there when, if you called Domino's After Dark, they weren't bringing you a pizza. And so I have concerns about, not even necessarily my grandmother in the immediate time, but myself, my brothers, my family, in terms of property taxes and other things, because I'm watching the neighborhood change vastly, and while I appreciate knowing that the environment that my grandmother is in is getting safer, it's still hard to get, you know? The streetlights repaired over there, and that neighborhood means a lot to me, and I don't want it to change so much that it's unrecognizable because the people who are from there and stay there can't afford to do so anymore. My grandmother's grandfather built that house for them, which Carl explained to me as my great-great-grandfather. Thank you, Carl. So I just wanted to bring that up because I know a lot's going on downtown, and now that's an area that seems pretty, you know, interesting to folks who are not from here, but there are a lot of people who are from there and stuck with it and Norfolk through the hardest of times, and so I hope we're considering them and making sure we assess what their property values changing means for them and all of that stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Bull.
The ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance to Roland Investments LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 1311 Reservoir Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye, but I do want to say, as far as Reservoir Avenue, for some time, the council hasn't invested millions of dollars concerning our streetlights, and the only thing that we ask is that you take a picture of the number that's on the pole and report it to us, and we can repair the streetlights. So that has been going on for some time now, and Dominion is doing the best that they can in every neighborhood and every community in the city of Norfolk. I'm...
Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Public hearing, 4, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the sale and conveyance to Around Town LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 1313 Reservoir Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants. I have an ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance to Around Town LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 1313 Reservoir Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R. 5 is the public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the sale and conveyance to R. and HH Enterprise LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 1530 Dungy Street in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, and release of certain protective and restrictive covenants, and the motion is to continue this item generally. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Public hearing, 6, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the sale and conveyance to K Contractors, Inc., of that certain parcel of property located at 2334 Barard Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, and release of certain protective and restrictive covenants. I have an ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance to K Contractors, Inc., of that certain parcel of property located at 2334 Barard Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle. Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander. Public hearing, 7, scheduled this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the sale and conveyance to R. and HH Enterprise LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 851 Johnson Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the city's online real estate auction and authorizing the modification, revision, or release of certain protective and restrictive covenants, and the motion is to continue generally. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander. R. 1, sir. R. 1 is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $5,000 from the Norfolk Community Trust for the purchase of clothing and miscellaneous items to support the peer recovery services program, if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information for the project. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle. Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R. 2 is an ordinance approving a lease termination agreement for the lease between the City of Norfolk and Urban League of Hampton Roads, Inc., for the premises located at 7300 Newport Avenue and authorizing the expenditure of the sum of $67,500 for termination fees. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
I just want to state for purposes here, I am an urban leaguer, so I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R. 3 is an ordinance approving the transfer of a certain Hampton Road Sanitation District appropriations of sewer facilities to the city of Norfolk located within and along Bowling Avenue between Studley Avenue and Powhatan Avenue and authorizing the city manager to enter into an appropriate transfer agreement. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R. 4 is an ordinance approving a short-term lease agreement permitting Virginia Arts Festival, Inc., to go upon in new city-owned property located at 451 Bank Street and known as The Greenspace for their 2025 season. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle. Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R. 5, the motion is going to be to continue until April 29th, sir. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander. R. 6 is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $300,000 from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission via the 2025 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act for the Meadow Lake Improvements Project, if and when received, and amending the annual as The Greenspace for their 2025 season, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
R seven is an ordinance authorizing and approving a comprehensive agreement between
the city of Norfolk and MEB General Contractors, Inc., under the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act for the final design and construction of a combined recreation library facility, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
R eight is a resolution appointing and re-appointing 35 members to six commissions, five boards, one authority, and one committee for certain terms.
Adopt the resolution, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
That's all I have. Susan Motusik, followed by Tiara Lassiter.
Already?
Yeah, already.
Oh. Alright, I'm feeling better. My house almost killed me when it burnt down. I did, before I start, I messed, I messed up a page. I apologize. Page five. I think you're missing page five, so I would like to hand that to somebody. Do you have page five? Sherri Collier?
You can give that to her later, see what she wants to do.
I'll send it to you later. I'm sorry. Alright, ready? Basically, I appreciate you all letting me talk to Mr. Bobby for code enforcement. Trying to rebuild my house, I'm ripping it down. Judy Boone and Ronnie Boone do not sell, they sell fire traps. I don't know why the fire started. I'm just devastated that the predatory looters and people that came in, and even Allstate, that hold up with that is the fact that I'm trying to get my contents portion done, and it's just been ridiculous, and taking on people from Wavy TV 10. We got to open our arms to change, but we can't let go of our values in this city. If you don't stick to your values when they're being tested, they're not values, they're hobbies. Jon Stewart, Dalai Lama said the other one. We have to change the way we do things, and I'm just sick and tired of not having rights. I am no better than anybody else in the city, I just want the same rights. I want to be able to subpoena people and have them served, I want to be able to fight for my rights, and I don't want to be hurt and retaliated against. This board is a good city council, and I'm sure that there's a lot of things you don't know, and I'm sorry that I'm having to bring this to you, but we need to change those things. And child abuse is, you know, trafficking a kid is child abuse, abusing someone in front of your children is child abuse, continually trying to steal my property from me, even after I lost everything. I want you to pray for me, I'm going to pray for the city, I want the retaliation to stop by the people in Oakdale Farms, we need to make sure code knows that we're not, we're not doing any squatters. Prostitutes and pedophiles do not have more rights than homeowners, even if I have a disability. I don't care if I live next to a purple person, a black and white person, a yellow person, as long as they're good to me, I'm good to them. I'll protect their property if they protect mine. I did the best I could to protect my neighbor's house next door when the house was burning down. I have a permanent injury, I got my doctor tomorrow, got rid of all the infection out of my body finally, and I saved my new doctor tomorrow from a brain tumor. So pray for me, I'll pray for you. Let's make this better for kids with disabilities, because they're going to grow up and become adults with disabilities, and they're going to be targeted by organized criminals, so we can do better than that. And I agree with you, I saw you on the news, I'm voting Butler, because I trust you for the Commonwealth attorney, Butler. Thank you. I think we need to hold people accountable. That's pretty much it. Everything that you got? If anybody needs to call me, my number's on there, my new address is 108 Harbor Bay Drive, and I don't think the Circuit Court knew that, and I'm not getting dates, so I'm not trying to miss things. Thank you so much for your time.
Tiara Lassiter? She's not here? Okay. Laura Naismith.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor, it's good to see you. Two quick things. I live at the Meadowbrook Dog Park, and this is actually, across the street, a suggestion made by one of the animal control officers. He said, "You all need cameras." We have had more than 12 dogs left in the park abandoned. We have a real problem with people opening the doors of their car and letting dogs out, not on the leash, and I'm going to mispronounce his name, but Officer Kaminski from the Police Department has been wonderful, and he put up a digital sign that said, "Please have your dog on a leash at all times." And he happened to be there last weekend in an unmarked car when two beautiful Belgian Malinois got let out of a car and just romped right into the park. And the next day, he was there, and two rottweilers got let out, and we have an open playground, which is wonderful, but it's just scary, so we need to please do something. I thought about covering the park in signs like we put out at Election Day that says, say, "Dogs must be on a leash," cheap but cheerful, but put them everywhere so that it, it can't be missed. But anyway, that's my concern. My second concern, you all probably don't know, in my previous life, I taught swimming lessons all over this city, including Ocean View Park, where I tried to persuade kids that the jellyfish really wouldn't hurt them, just, you know, ignore them. And when the minimum wage was $1.60 an hour, I got $9 an hour for coaching a swimming team. I know what I'm doing. And it breaks my heart, I asked at three public hearings about the Fitness and Wellness Center, has anybody here taught swimming lessons that's designing this new pool? I could never get an answer. I sent emails about it. If you all go back to that Fitness and Wellness Center before they knock it down, the beauty of that swimming pool are the steps. And I used to work with, you know, when you think about most kids getting in a pool, it's three and a half to four feet deep, and the swimming instructor is either saying, "Okay, now hold on to the wall," or the swimming instructor is in the pool with the kids, but they're behind them, so you got the kids going like this. They, you know, they're trying to look at the instructor and hanging on to the wall for dear life, because they don't know how to swim. The beauty of the steps, design influences life a lot more than we know, and you could line up 10 little people on that first step, and you're looking at them and their eyeballs, and then you can say, "Go down another step, and then go on your stomach, and let's put our legs behind us and kick." Those steps made all the difference in the world, and before we can have people swimming in a swim meet, we've got to teach them to swim.
Thank you so much.
So, next pool out in the east side, please put steps in it.
Thank you. Monae Johnson, followed by David Whitfield.
Hi, I'm Monae Johnson again. It's getting hot out, and I just wanted to bring something to y'all's attention that I haven't been able to before because I've had more important things to bring up. The lack of soft-serve ice cream in this city is a crime. Cold Stone, all that great, Lollies, whatever you put on 21st Street, love it, great. I have the Mr. Softy app, there's one soft-serve ice cream truck, and it's by the airport, and whenever I need it, it's in Chesapeake. I don't know what y'all can do, I know y'all know some people. Please, pick up the phone, dial whoever you can, I don't want ice cream out of a tub. And you may say, "We have a Dairy Queen." Dairy Queen is not legally allowed to call that stuff ice cream. It's delicious, but it's not soft-serve ice cream. So please, figure something out. Whatever you got to do, it's getting warm. I know somebody knows somebody.